All right, are you ready? Okay. Um, welcome everyone for joining us tonight. Um, tonight we're doing the public hearing for the um sale of the town owned property on Two Church Street. And following that, we'll do the public hearing for the amendment to the um building ordinances. And then after that, we'll have presentation um from Beta about our pavement management program. On how we um are working on our town roads. So we'll start off with the um public hearing for the sale of Two Church Street. So back in October, um, the town put out um a bid for the sale of the property. Um, we'd already taken down um the meeting house. It ended up being too deteriorated to um to fix or to sell the building and have it moved off property. Um, so the board of selectmen decided to tear it down and um we decided to put the property up for sale. And we went through the proper procurement policy. We listed the bid um per the state networks. Um, we sent, we sent letters to the abutting property owners to let them know that the property was um that we put a bid out for the sale. And uh we got back one. And that was from um Dave and Loreen Blanchett that are abutting property owners. Um, and it was for forty thousand dollars. So we um accepted the bid and part of the process for the sale of town property is it has to be um approved by the town. So the public hearings here for if anyone had any questions about that or.
Questions?
Yep.
Joe Miller.
Do we turn the camera?
I would urge the selectmen not to sell.
Did you just speak into the mic, Joe? Sorry.
Joe Miller. I would urge the selectmen not to sell the property located at Two Church. Have the town hall, the mural, the clock, sidewalks, now those plans to extend the sidewalks, which is great, you're starting to get a center of town established. That would be a perfect spot to place the bell from the old meeting house and any other artifacts that could be presented outside or town history will start a look at the center of town. To put the bell up at Wiley School Road, hasn't been there for years. If you wanted to display it behind, it's not a, I don't think it's a good idea to put it by the pavilion, the gazebo, out of the way. But I think in the center of town, it's start to get a, a, a center of town that we don't have anything with. That shows the history of the town, but next to the mural, the clock, the sidewalks, the extension jack and his committee is doing a great job with that. I think it'll be a perfect fit that we kept that, how many square, um, was it forty two by?
It's really small. And I can tell you that that was my original plan for the property was to put, was to do a historic park there. Um, where we would plant like historic plants of the time through the history of the town. Um, and that was, and put artifacts there and and little displays. Um, that was my original plan, but after looking at the size of the property, we would have to fence it in. Um, when you put the plants in, we, right now, we don't have a water, we don't have any water to water the plants at the clock tower. And it's been really hard for Mary's, our volunteer that lives across the street there. And she actually comes to the town hall with buckets and has to carry them to water them. So in order to like have the park done properly, we would have to put some sort of water source to be able to water stuff. And when I mentioned it to Public Works, we don't have equipment to maintain a property that's small. Um, all our mowers are large. Um, and it would just, it it just ended up being more of a cost to the town that I was honestly afraid wouldn't be maintained throughout the time. It's, it's a challenging thing that it just came up to more to put it on the tax roll. Cause we talked about it at meetings also.
Order around the property, stone or whatever, that way you, without anything, I just bought grass and a pad with the bell and maybe something to describe what it was and the history of the meeting house. So all this is this grass and I'm confident that the county could purchase something and pack out pickers or something.
Right.
Blow that little piece of of grass.
Right.
Yeah, no, that you're just putting something specific to the site. And I think that while that would look great, I think the ambition what is killing that.
Right. No, we talked about it and it would just, it ended up being too much of a project and a cost and a long term maintenance for the town. When selling it, it ends up on the grand list as a property role and.
Some, sometimes, I think sometimes the historical value that this sort of site and to the fabric of the town.
Right.
Is a little bit more important than a post stand that they're going to collect minimal.
Right.
Taxes on anyway.
Right.
So for the cost of a bush lawn though, we're gonna say no.
Right. If we just did grass and a couple of monuments, yeah, yeah.
Think it would take care of the water.
Yep. Thank you. Ron.
The old church, right?
Yeah, the property. Do we have to turn the camera?
That church has been on in our side for a long time.
Those running, those for the microphone.
That church has been a fallen aside for a long time. To get rid of it is like the way I look at it is the best. You get some return for the money we spent over there. And we took that and wanted it condemned and the guy just gave it to us for back tax and so we just done any nothing. It's like cost us money since then. And the best thing, like I say, put it back on the tax roll. So you're getting something out of it. We got three guys over there who don't have time to do everything they should. Add more to it, it's only going to cost more in the long run. The best thing to do is get rid of that bill, getting rid of that building would be the best thing they could have done. Now giving back, like selling the land to somebody for a decent price. They give you some money back on what we have got invested in it. And it's as far as I'm concerned, it's the best thing, it's the old thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more questions or comments about the sale of Two Church Street? So I want to say that we'll be voting on the sale of Two Church Street at the town meeting. Um, that's being rescheduled.
For the twenty ninth.
For the twenty nine. So if people are in opposition to selling it and and want it to stay as um as a town um memorial site for the property that was there, I encourage people to come to the town meeting and and vote, so. Nope.
No.
The, the only thing that's going to the referendum is the um, the budget. Um, the rest of the stuff um is going to be voted at the town meeting, so. Yep.
Yes.
Yes, so let people know um to come, so. And so then we'll move on if there's no more questions on Two Church Street to the ordinances and I don't know if I saved. Thank you.
Jim to the rescue.
So um we, we have recently hired a new building inspector and when he was going um through the or- ordinances and um but our fees for um building permits, he, he recommended a couple of changes. The first one is um the building code ordinance. It's just to addition, it was, there were things in there that um the zoning, that said the zoning officer was the one in charge of um issuing the certificate of occu- of occupancy when really it's the zoning officer and the building inspector. But I think when this ordinance was, ordinance was passed, we always, we've always had the building officer and the zoning officer was the same person, so it didn't really matter. Um, but now they are separate people, so um we're just correcting that. So that's um for the building code ordinance, that's what the changes are. And the other change is on the back page, um it was the state, it referred to the um public health code as the state co- um, the state sanitary code, which it's not, that's not what it's called. It's called the public health code, so that's just a clarification. So they're just minor word changes on that. Did anyone have any questions about that one? Okay. And then the next one is the building permit fee ord- ordinance. And um the new building inspector said that our fees that are here, um, they're not even enough to cover the cost a, a lot of the towns, like their building fees cover the cost of their building inspector. Um, it pays for itself. Um, these fees were um haven't been changed in a while and weren't really enough for that. So um it removes the listed costs, anything in the brackets is removed. Um, and the additions are um a minimum of forty five dollars um for any, for any project. And sixteen twenty six per um every hun- a thousand dollars of the estimated total cost and labor and materials for the project for, for everything. So those are the changes, yep.
I'm very agree um. First page.
Yep.
Last sentence, after inspection approval, water supply and drainage system by the health officer. According to the standards of the state, public health code, building and forest law, the availability of the inspector shall issue a motion to the body.
Oh, we're on the first code?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you read that? I was looking at the other one, can you tell me where that was? The first page?
Yeah.
Yep.
Second sentence.
Yep.
Then at the beginning with after, after inspection approval, water supply. Drainage and sewage system by the town health officer. They, public health code. So they can afford, I think it's a different one.
Yeah, after the, that saying that it has to be inspected by the um, the health department before they can issue the. Um, after inspection approval of the water supply, yeah, we can do that, we can amend it. I don't have a pen. Forgot, he doesn't need to do that for everything. Thanks for coming to the meeting, Jim. All right, so after. Yeah, no, that makes sense. It, it makes it um, one of the things I found with ordinances and like state statutes, the more clear you make it, the easier it is to uh enforce it, so if that makes it clear then, so I put a period after code and then the. Yep.
And after they, after they.
Yep.
Then just going to use. Challenge.
Oh, it should be a comma, comma, the, so it says after, after inspection approval of the water supply, drainage and sewage system by the town health officer according to standards of the state and public health signing, then, then the.
Then.
Then.
Not the then.
Then.
You're missing something.
Then the, then the. Okay, that works.
Then the.
Then the.
Then the.
Then the.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions about the building fees? All right, hearing none, um, this also will be voted on at the town meeting. And it won't be brought to the referendum. So if anyone has any opinions on that, um, be sure to come to the town meetings. Okay, so moving on.
Yeah.
Yep, let's reshare that.
Next we have um Joe McGuire with us from um Beta, which is the company that we contract with um with Public Works to assist us with um our road, our road management. Um, I guess you can explain.
Yeah.
You're more detailed than I am. Thank you.
No problem.
Uh, yeah, so thank you for uh, for having me. Um, so again, my name's Joe McGuire, I'm a project manager with Beta Groupings.
Are you controlling yours or are you?
I'm controlling this.
Yes, one.
Yeah, I'm just using this for my reference, so I can know what's.
Just making sure.
Yep. Yes.
My. Oops, sorry.
Can't move it. The mic will pick it up, because I'm picking it from the room. Sure, not from there, Joe.
Sorry.
That's okay.
You shook your head, yes.
What do I?
So like I was saying, so uh, my role is, I serves as a project manager for Beta Group. Um, I'm with the GIS Asset Management Group at Beta. Uh, we're a company of about approximately uh one hundred and sixty seven employees. Um, our firm is multidisciplinary, so we are a civil site engineering firm by trade. Um, but again, like I said, I serve as a project manager under the GIS Asset Management Group. So what that means is our group is responsible for going into communities throughout New England. Uh, we service about a hundred and seventy to a hundred and eighty on the aspect of pavement management, uh, like Tracy mentioned. So what we do is we go into communities, we assess roadways throughout the town. Um, using uh automated technologies in order to do a scan of the roads. We look at, we are looking for severe distresses along the roadway and then in turn we're creating a um, a rating score for that roadway. Um, Beta has been around, like I said, for forty two years. Our group is the largest GIS Asset Management Group in New England. Uh, we're about fifteen full-time employees. And so we're doing this every day. Like I said, we service about a hundred and seventy to a hundred and eighty towns in the last ten years just on pavement management alone. But we also service communities with mapping needs along the lines of stormwater, ADA compliance, sign inventories, street tree inventories. Um, trying to think, water utilities and wastewater as well, uh, just to name a few. So the reason why Tracy and uh the, the Public Works Department had um approached us was to be able to come in and actually conduct a pavement management assessment for the community. Uh, knowing that the town is made up about twenty seven or twenty eight miles of public uh town accepted roads. Uh, we, we took the opportunity to come in and actually do a scan for you. Uh, what we're trying to do, what the, the pavement management program is designed to do, is to be a proactive um rather than reactive model. We're not trying to come in and and tell the town exactly how to go about paving their roadways. What we're here to do is to serve as a consultant so that we can introduce you to different types of methods and repair methods that you might not be familiar with, but also to help on the planning side of things, looking at what roads to prioritize and why. Um, and then also looking at budgetary needs to be able to conduct the work needed to, to uphold and maintain the roadway network that you have. So we're trying to take a proactive approach rather than reactive. A lot of communities, I think, struggle with the idea of, you know, worst first model for everything when it comes to roads and addressing their needs. So we try to bring in a better preservation approach to how we do things, trying to maximize the dollars that you do spend year to year um while showing the need for further funding in order to gain scores uh and to have scores go up network wide. So one of the things that we were trying to do here, uh, you know, in, in learning more about Volentown, Tracy and the Public Works Department, they sat down with us, we, they explained to us the situation. You know, it being only twenty seven miles of road, there's, there's a need for improving what you do have for town maintenance. Um, we work with all sorts of communities, this is not a program that we try to, you know, have only fit larger cities or uh towns. We work with towns like yourself with only twenty seven miles, I actually work with a community of twenty miles, uh, up to towns with four hundred thirty five miles. So this isn't uh a program that is only really applicable, and I think a lot of times that gets misconstrued. Most people look at larger cities saying, okay, well, they would have a need to address all the road miles that they maintain. But this is really applicable to everyone. Um, and, and that's something that we pride ourselves on at Beta, is being able to go in and and specialize working with any type of community, rural, urban or suburban. Um, so what you're seeing on screen here, this is that federal highway standard deterioration curve. This is the pavement site life cycle as it were. Um, so what we're trying to do is we're trying to catch roads that are in the top portion of that curve uh before they fall out of good, excellent affair and enter into more of that poor or failed state. We're trying to catch roads before they do that, so that way you're maximizing the life of the road and also the dollars being spent to repair them while still addressing the need at the bottom of the curve, because every community has roads that are towards the bottom of the curve. Um, that's, that's just a fact and and the way that deterioration happens over time. But at the end of the day, what we're trying to develop is a prioritized plan um and use this as a capital planning tool for year to year by tracking the work being done and also the work that's for, for future projects. So we break our, our projects uh with pavement management into five major steps. Uh, what you're seeing on screen here, we have system setup and GIS mapping. Like I said, everything in our group is GIS based, so we're using online mapping tools in order to collect this data and host it and make it visible and interactive. Um, so we start with our system setup and GIS configuration that's going with, through with the town to make sure that we're capturing every mile of road that is town accepted and asphalt paved. Uh, this assessment did not look at anything with gravel. We have a different way of going about doing that, but it's a very different type of approach to assess gravel roadways. So this is mainly focused on just asphalt roads that are town accepted. From there, we go into the actual pavement inspection program and I'll get into that in a second. And then once we collect that data, we're doing an existing conditions analysis. So we're looking at the data being collected, we're trying to figure out how we can help prioritize roadways based on the current conditions of the roads. From there, we go into our planning and priorities, prioritization phase of the project and then our system deployment and our training. So this is something that we do with all of our clients, we have deliverables. Um, online dashboards is how we like to deliver our data now. So it's something that Tracy and the DBW staff can interact with and use uh year to year with planning and to kind of look and see what the data looks like actually out in um, in a, in a map format rather than just tabular reporting. I'll quickly go through this next slide, so like I said, we're, we're a GIS centric group and so we take a very GIS centric approach. Um, everything we do is hosted in ArcGIS Online, which is a cloud-based server. Um, it's seven times protected, it's all privacy, uh, it adheres to all privacy standards that we need. Um, and it allows us to be more efficient and effective with the way we share data back and forth with the communities we work with while also being efficient for ourselves uh within, within our own office. So the approach that we took in Volentown, uh, we offer a, a few standard uh options for how we go out and actually collect the data. Uh, the option that was chosen for Volentown was using the LiDAR scanner. Um, so what you're seeing here on screen is an image of our vehicle um and strapped to the top of the vehicle is a LiDAR scanner. Uh, what this is, is a tool that allows us to go out and just simply have to drive the roadway corridors. As we're driving, the sensor on top of the car is actually shooting out millions of points in every direction and that is creating what's considered a point density cloud. Uh, what that generates is it allows us to cut, sort of see the roadway corridor itself, fifty feet from every, from every direction of the sensor itself. So we typically like to drive both, both directions of the road to try to capture a more um denser point cloud for, for uh accuracy reasonings. But what we're actually doing is the LiDAR scanner itself is actually picking up distresses on the road. Um, so we're capturing data every twenty foot section of roadway with a forward-facing camera as well. What this allows us to do is to supplement the LiDAR scan with actual imagery, so we can in-house do our own QAQC process that allows us to ensure that we agree with the scoring that the AI technology is giving us uh once we receive our deliverable. In this case, we're working with Civil AI, they're, they're the partner that we use. Um, it's their LiDAR scanner that they've developed and we've since worked with them since about twenty twenty one. Um, we had actually completed this scan for the town um in, towards the end of twenty twenty two, I think it was like about October of twenty twenty two. Is when we actually scanned the roads, um, and we've been working with Tracy and the DPW staff since. Um, but this is to kind of sort of, sort of give you a snapshot of exactly what the current scoring and, and what the current system looks like. Um, but at the end of the day, the reason why we like using the AI and the technology approach is it can create a consistent data set. So at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is we want to create something that can be repeatable. Uh, the old manual way of going out and inspecting roadway network is a trained engineer who actually drives every road in town and he or she is looking at the road and trying to sort of subjectively say what their, what the severity and the extent of distresses are on the roadway. So that being said, if I go and drive a road, I'm going to give it a certain score. If Tracy drives the same road, she might come up with a different score and so on and so forth. So the reason why we started to shift in twenty eighteen to more of an automated and technology um approach was to create that consistent data set. Machine learning technology, it's a thing that is coming up everywhere now. Um, and it's something that we have the ability to start to work with on the ground floor at Beta. So we're helping the technology actually learn as it captures imagery and as it captures LiDAR scans, learning exactly what we need it to pick up and what we don't need it to pick, to pick up, excuse me, yes. Yep. Yes.
Let me go down and say.
Yep. So what we do is we break every single roadway in town into segments, so that's intersection to intersection intervals. Typically is how we like to break out the actual GIS layer um in the map. When we have a long stretch of road where we don't have in there sectioned roads, which happens a lot in Volentown, we actually break at like a known location, whether it be a driveway, but we don't like to have a segment really go more than about a half a mile. That's kind of the limit, because we're trying to create an average for the overall roadway. So we break those segment, we break it down to a segment level. Um, and the LiDAR and the forward-facing imagery is then applying the um scoring that we're getting to each one of those segments with that, which then averages out to give us the entire roadway's score from zero to a hundred. So realistically, the roadway, if you have three segments on a road, each segment's getting a zero to a hundred score, but then the entirety of that road is then being averaged based on those three segment level scores is how we do it. That's what generates the overall network score for us. So again, it's a way for us to be able to drill down into the data. Uh, we're trying to look at it large uh at, from high level, network wide, and then being able to drill down to a single segment um if, if needed. But that's a, that's a great point. So this just kind of breaks it down a little bit further for you, um, based on what you had just, uh, what you just asked. So from the top to the bottom, what we're doing is we're going out, we're driving, the LiDAR is capturing at that point level, which is then averaging out for a score at the segment level, intersection to intersection, like I said. And then we end up with an overall score as well. So really what we're doing is we're able to drill into the data to a point level at this, at this uh type of scan with a LiDAR approach. Um, but also again, like I was saying, looking at it more high level as well, not just at the segment or point level, but at a entire street or if not, an entire network or neighborhood. So this is just a quick breakdown of the actual roadway profile for Volentown. So like I said, we inspected the twenty seven point nine one miles of actual paved road that's town-owned. Um, there's about two and a half miles of gravel road that is also town-owned, that was not a part of this assessment. Um, the state roads in town make up about eighteen point three eight miles of road, giving us a total of forty eight point seven five miles of road that makes up Volentown. But like I said, for the purposes of this um project, we were focused on just that twenty seven point nine one. So after we receive the data and we complete the scan, uh, we then take this, this information from Civil AI and we bring it into our database, our, our Beta's uh model. And what we do is we break every single roadway score into five major repair band categories and those are ranges based on the PCI or RSR score, which is road surface rating or pavement condition index, depending on how you look at it. Um, so starting from the top, we have uh roads that are scoring anywhere between a ninety four to a hundred. Those are roads that we're saying at this point in time require no maintenance, so they're in the no maintenance required band. Those are your roads that are more recently been paved, um, they're in great condition, there's really no signs of any distresses being there. Uh, we then move into routine maintenance, those are your roads scoring anywhere between an eighty to a ninety four. These are roads that are still in great shape, good condition, uh, but you might start seeing minor oxidation forming, small cracking. Um, so these are roads that we would typically say are roads that are candidates for crack sealing, fog seals, rejuvenators, things of that nature. Um, preventative maintenance, so now we're moving down into that curve where we're trying to catch a lot of the roads in this repair band. These are roads scoring anywhere between a seventy to an eighty, these are roads that are still in fair condition. You're just starting to see a few more of the surface level uh distresses showing up. So you're starting to see a little bit more of the cracking, maybe certain cracks are starting to open up a little bit wider. But these are roads that we can still catch if, if we apply a treatment to them now and extend the, the life of the road without having to go into costly uh repair methods. So these are methods that are like chip seals, micro surfaces, shim and overlays, um ultra-thin bonded wearing courses, things of that nature. These are all repair types that we typically see being applied to roads in this, in this repair band. Uh, from there, we move on into minor rehabilitation. These are roads in poor condition, you're starting to see severe tra- uh severe distresses, so longitudinal transverse cracking, alligator cracking, potentially the beginnings of small potholes, edge line cracking, um, and potential ruddings and depressions within the roadway. So these are roads that are scoring anywhere between a fifty to a seventy and we are typically seeing these roads as mill and overlay roads uh with hot mix, cold in place recycling, hot in place recycling, heavy. Heavy shims and level overlays um with some sort of surface treatment then put on top of them. Um, and then from there, we move on into our worst category, which is major rehabilitation. These are failed roads. They're they're deficient in condition and in structure. These are roads anywhere between a fit zero to a fifty. Um, typically, we're looking at roads uh at this point. Using reclamation reconstruction, full depth reclamation projects. Um, so basically starting from scratch on these roads. One thing I do want to point out is that just because there's different treatments and we we typically break these out. This is sort of the standard model that Beta uses. Um, but this is not something that is a one size fits all. We customize this to the towns that we work with. Typically, in rural communities, we tend to stretch and and really push the curve on the types of treatments we're applying because typically you have less funding. Um, in a perfect world, we would be applying hot mix to everything. But with the world that we live in now, hot mix, liquid asphalt prices, they're through the roof. Um, and they're continuing to go up year to year. So we're seeing a lot of towns trying to look at. Other methodology methodologies for preserving roads and trying to hold them until new levels of funding are available. Or if if you're able to chase grants. Um, but I just wanted to make the point that just because a road falls within a certain repair band, that's for us at a planning level. But we use sub consultants ourselves in-house that are pavement experts and they come in and we actually look have them. When our decisions being made on a road, we try to have them pointed point the town in the right direction. Yes, so so that's not something that that typically isn't something that will just standardize as part of the model because it does vary from town to town. Yes, but that is something that that the town and and myself have had conversations about. Um, it's a great point. So for pavement experts, for for folks in the field that I'm in. Uh, typically, you know, when we're saying no maintenance required, we're typically looking at a road anywhere from one to five years old. Um, that depends on again, the level of asphalt that you're getting. I have towns that work on roads and they will see a road not have a crack form. Maybe in the first five years and they're just starting to see cracks forming in the first five years. There's towns that I work with that get pavement from certain distributors. They might see distresses starting within that first year. And it all depends on, again, where you're getting your asphalt from. Um, because there is different things that are being put into asphalt at different plants. Uh, and you're you're part of our job is to help point the town into into places where we know. We're getting quality material from that we've seen in other communities. Um, it's not to say that we're trying to, you know, go out and say only working with certain vendors. Pricing also plays a role. So we're trying to find that that happy medium where. The pricing for the tonnage of the asphalt makes sense for what the town's budget is. But also knowing that they're getting quality quality asphalt so that they're not just going. And putting stuff down on the road and immediately having to rip that up within a few years because it didn't hold. Um, but that does happen. We also are looking at weather. Uh, with the way that we're getting rain right now, rain is the road's worst enemy. Um, I typically like to see. More snow in a winter because at least we can plow that off the road and get it off the edge of the road. When we have rain like we've had in the last year. Uh, that is infiltrating into the sub base of the road. That's when you get that freeze thaw in New England and that's really what destroys a lot of New England roads. That's why across New England, the average is only about. A seventy to maybe a seventy one in most of the towns that we've worked with. Um, it's very hard to find a community in New England that is really at the top of a curve. When it comes to an overall score for their network. So these are just quick examples of what we're talking about when we're looking at different roads. So. Again, this is these, none of these roads are samples from Volantown. I just want to preface that before I go any further. Um, I never like to come in and show roads of of the town that we're looking at, but this is just to give you an idea. Of how we're rating roads and what we're looking at when we're saying roads are certain scores. So obviously, at the top of the curve, we have a road scoring a hundred. This was a brand new paved road. This photo was taken shortly with about three months after the road was taken. So we're looking at a nice new hot mixed asphalt road. No distresses at this time. So at this moment in time, the community wouldn't need to worry about addressing anything on that roadway. Uh, below that, we have a road scoring in eighty six. It might be a little bit difficult to see on screen, but you're starting to see a little bit of oxidation forming, little bit of um. Little bit of edge line cracking is starting to form, but it's still a road in great shape. So it's something that we could do, apply. A very low cost treatment to it to continue to hold that road and extend its life. Um, next on screen, we have a road scoring in that preventative maintenance band of seventy four. Uh, you're starting to see some of that transverse and longitudinal cracking, severe oxidation is starting to set in. But it isn't, it's still not something that is structurally deficient. So it's again, something that we could put a wearing force on, something to put on surface level. And we'll we'd be able to hold that road um for the community at a low cost. Beneath that, we have a road now in that more of that minor rehab band fifty six. You're starting to see the um. Longitudinal cracking, you can see that's a joint opening up on the roadway. Uh, spiral kind of spiraling off of that, you have a lot of block cracking forming, which will then turn into alligator cracking. And in turn, turn into potholes. Um, so this is, these are the types of roads where we're saying where we have a really heavy rain year. This is where rain's getting into that subbase. It's going to do a lot of damage to the roadway itself. And then, of course, we have our roads at the bottom of the curve. We have a thirty four at the top. Uh, you're starting to see grass growing out of a pothole, an existing pothole, severe alligator cracking. There's actually rutting on it. You can't really see the defined edge to the end of the road because the edge line cracking and chunks of asphalt falling off. Beneath that, we actually have a road. This is a an actual paved road. It looks like a dirt road, but this was a road that we recently saw. And it scored a ten. Um, the roadway itself is totally deficient. So. Again, just trying to highlight the types of roads that we're seeing and how we're scoring them along the curve. So now I'm getting into exactly what's going on for the town of Volantown. Um, so right now, as it stands as of yesterday, because our model that we run in our database is a live database. So there's deterioration running in it day to day. Every time we open up the database. It's running a deterioration factor of about two points per year across the entire network. Um, that is being said that once a road is repaired, we note that, we put it back into the system. And we update that road to its new score um based on the type of treatment that's being done. So this is a really a living database. Um, but as of last night, when I when I went in and put this together. The current score for Volantown is a sixty six point nine five for the twenty seven point nine one miles that we inspected. When we initially did the scan in twenty twenty two, uh, it was a sixty seven point oh two. So we've been pretty much able to maintain based on some of the work that the staff had just done this previous summer. Um, with with Tarklin Road, Tarklin Hill, I believe, and Wiley School Road um being uh chip, double chip sealed. Um, so basically, the way that this breaks out is. Each one of those five repair uh five major repair band categories that we have, major rehab, minor preventative routine and no maintenance required. It's broken out here. This is sort of the estimated cost of improvement slide. This is sort of the slide that shows exactly the current situation that we're looking at. For Volantown. Each one of those repair bands has a unit square yard cost that we associate to it. So in this case, major rehabilitation is carrying sixty dollars per square yard. Is what we see on average for that repair band for Volantown based on numbers that we backed into and feedback from the town and the DPW staff. Um, for for costs for different types of materials. Minor rehab rehabilitation, we're carrying nineteen dollars and twenty cents a square yard. Preventative maintenance, about nine dollars and sixty cents, route uh routine is seventy five cents. Then obviously, no maintenance required is zero. So then we go into the different uh, each one of the repair bands has the uh length in miles of the roads that fell within each one of those repair bands. Major rehab, five and a half miles, minor rehabilitation, just over eight and a half miles. Preventative maintenance, seven and a half or just shy of seven and a half miles, routine, just under five and a half. And then no maintenance required, just about a mile worth of road. Um, that makes up your twenty seven point nine one that we assessed. We then break that out into the square yards just to show this on the chart. So now we're taking that square yard unit cost and applying that to the square yard total for each one of those repair bands. That's giving us that estimated cost at the end there. Um, each one of those repair bands, so major rehab makes about twenty percent of the network. Minor rehab, about thirty point seven five. So about fifty percent of the network in Volantown is in a. Minor or major rehab state. So your worst roads in town, that's anything scoring between a zero to a sixty. Um, and then we have about half the network scoring in routine and preventative and no maintenance required. So right now, the worst roads in town are approximately, we'll say. Right, they're all longer roads and we'll get into the map in a second, but. We're looking at an estimated backlog. So what we're saying here is that. If the town of Volantown spends six and a half million dollars tomorrow. They could get every single road in town essentially up to a hundred and their network score to a hundred. We know that that's not realistic, but it's for us, it's a planning number. It's to show. Progress and to show the current snapshot of how things stand based on the the costs that we're carrying. And based on the the lane miles of road falling into their their respective um repair band. So this does not include, and that's the note at the bottom, anything other than just the asphalt itself to be repaired on the roadways. So it doesn't involve incorporate any of the drainage aspects of it, any of the sidewalks. If we do have, I know you don't have much, but. Any sidewalk improvements, things of that nature. That's not incorporated into that six and a half million. That is strictly just for the roadway and the asphalt on the roads themselves. Yes. Yeah, well, we're gonna get into that actually, but that's a good question. So. Right now, the flip side of that chart is the map showing Volantown. Um, the roads that are in yellow and that sort of uh the green with the black lining. Uh, really basically everything on the edges of the town. Those are your um state forests and state roads. So those were the roads not included. Everything else, so your orange, the dark blue, light blue, red, and there is another green in there. Those are all of your roadways that were inspected. Each one is color is associated to. Um, the repair band that there that that is associated to it. So in this case, no maintenance required is the dark blue. You'll notice that there's about, there's a very small segment of that on the northern part of the town. Uh, routine maintenance is your light blue. So those are your roads that are still in very good shape, but. Um, still might need some sort of rejuvenator or crack sealing done to them. Preventative maintenance again is the green, uh, minor rehab, orange and major rehab red. So this sort of just shows you a quick snapshot of how it breaks out as of last night with the database being live um for the town as it stands now. So this going into the question sir that you just asked, um, so what we also do as part of our assessment is we forecast model. Um, so what we're, what you're looking at here is an approximate. Chart showing what it would take with the current score of a sixty six point nine five Volantown to maintain that score. Based on those costs that we're carrying um for each one of the repair bands. And everything is being run off of that pie chart that you're seeing on the screen. So. We're saying that out of these five different repair uh different budget scenarios, everything you're seeing off to the side. So we're saying. If the town were to put five hundred twenty five thousand dollars into its roadway uh budget every year for repairing and paving roads. Four hundred twenty five thousand, three hundred twenty five thousand, two hundred and twenty five thousand and a hundred twenty five thousand. What is the likelihood and what is most likely going to happen to the overall score for the network in the town? Um, as you can see, hundred twenty five thousand, you start to lose ground. So about five, we project about five years out. So. This was as of December of twenty twenty two. So by twenty twenty seven, we're saying that that score goes from a sixty six point nine five. Down to below, just below a sixty four. Um, if we're only injecting two hundred and twenty five thousand, we're not degrading as much, but we're still going in a backwards. Motion. So we're just, we're just about a sixty five and a half. Um, from the current score of about a seventy sixty seven. Um, three hundred and twenty five thousand, this is sort of how we model. We try to find that sweet spot. What's it gonna take to maintain the current score? Right now, three hundred and twenty five thousand seems to be that number. Um, so if the town of Volantown were to. Put three hundred twenty five thousand dollars aside every year for the next five years. They would, they should essentially be able to maintain the current score that it's at right now in the current standings of the roads. Um, and then four hundred twenty five thousand in about five years gets you to about a seventy sixty eight and a half. And then five hundred twenty five gets you to over a seventy. Now, earlier I had said the average for the hundred and eighty communities that we've done this for, for New England is about a seventy one, maybe a seventy. Um, you're not that far off. You're certainly not the worst town that we've ever seen. Um, I prefaced that with, I will follow that up, I guess with. I just did a presentation for a town there in fifty six. So we've seen as low as a fifty with the towns that we've worked with. Um, for this, for this area. And this section of Connecticut, you're sort of the average right now because we work along with Stonington, Putnam. Uh, Brooklyn, Woodstock, and we're going to be working with Sterling. But these are all communities that we've just recently scanned. And your your score is not that far off from all of these communities. Now granted, they have much more miles. Than than Volantown with only twenty seven, twenty eight miles of road being inspected. But it does just point to the fact that everything that you're seeing here on this chart. Is being run off of that funding distribution pie chart. So that's what's driving the way that those lines are showing up on the screen. So we're saying if. You know, we funded three hundred twenty five thousand dollars a year for the next five years, ten percent of that's gonna go to routine maintenance. Twenty percent of that's gonna go to preventative maintenance of the budget, forty percent to minor rehab, thirty percent. To major rehab or full depth reconstructions, um, trying to redo all the roads. So to kind of circle back to what you were saying, this sort of helps us. High level project and show how we need to start to catch the roads in town to best manage moving forward. Hopefully in the right direction, not going backwards and losing ground with the score. I have a vested interest in this. My program is what I'm trying to help use to. You know, aid Tracy and the DPW in the decisions that they're making year to year to make sure that we're moving in that direction. Um, this is not to say that we expect and that we're saying that the town of Volantown needs to find three hundred twenty five thousand dollars in their budget. By next year. We're, we've worked with so many communities to sort of do this in a staggered approach. But what we're trying to show here is that. The money that is currently being funded, which I believe you were saying is really just the town aid money from Connecticut, the state.
Yeah.
Just about a hundred and seventy six thousand.
Yeah.
Something like that. Right. When you take all of the money out of that hundred and seventy five thousand. At the town's getting for just the regular maintenance, whether that be fuel, full patching, salt, sand, what have you. I think the the DPW staff were saying they're left with maybe eighty five to ninety thousand dollars. To actually put into roadways. So.
Does nothing.
Right, which with the cost of hot mix. Kind of right now, the average cost that we're seeing going into this year is about a hundred to a hundred and five dollars a ton for hot mix. That is not going to get you far with ninety thousand dollars. So this is sort of the situation that we're trying to raise awareness to the town with the current standing of how things are. Um, and you know, I give Tracy credit and I give the the three gentlemen at the DPW credit because. They've shown up to a lot of different events that we've that we've either sponsored or been a part of. Trying to show the need for preventative maintenance preservation approaches in pavement management um. Across New England. So you know, you have a first select woman and you have. DPW staff, they're trying to be as proactive as they can. They're trying to educate themselves. They're trying to show that they're invested in this as well. Which is why they approached us to come in and try to bring this this sort of uh data to everyone's attention in the community. Um, but you know, right now, we're at a point where we, you know, the town is gonna need to have to have a discussion as to. How do we start to improve things with the current way things are and the way things are getting funded? Um, you know, we try to work with the town and pointing them into the direction of different grant opportunities where we can. Um, but those are very competitive because there's a lot of communities just like you in the same boat. So there's still that sort of a need of the community to also be kind of bought in on. Putting money into the budget if possible. And if that takes time, then that's what it takes, time. Uh, you know, the roads that are in really bad condition, they're in really bad condition. They're not gonna really get any worse than they already are. So I'm not saying that, you know, I expect or that the town should expect to see. You know, the the budget of three hundred twenty five thousand being approved anytime soon. But we need to start making progress and steps to get to that point. I use East Hampton, Connecticut as an example. We just did this presentation for them uh recently. We've been working with them for about four years. They started out with a budget of four hundred fifty thousand, I'm sorry, three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, but for about eighty five miles of road. So they were in a very similar situation when it, when you look at the miles of road that they had to maintain to what they were actually budgeted every year. And over the last four years, we've worked with them and done presentations, workshops, trying to educate the public. In the town to sort of buy in and they were up, they were up against the option of bonding. Or coming up with the capital themselves. They didn't want to go to a bond. We recently just found out that they were approved to get their budget. They've gone from three hundred fifty thousand from four years ago. They're now being funded seven hundred thousand dollars a year, starting this year. And their plan is to get them to a million as soon as they possibly can. But again, I use this as an example to show that it does take time. We're not coming in as sub consultants and demanding and telling the town, there's no hope. We're, we're here to try to help you. So we're just trying to bring the data in front of everyone to summarize and to show what the need is. Um, so that being said, the next slide here does showcase that dashboard deliverable that I was talking about. So this is what we've deployed to Tracy and the DPW staff. They're able to go in, look at the forward facing imagery that was collected out on the roadways that we've inspected. But they're able to see the network as a whole and they're able to drill into that point level data when making decisions. So we were coming up with capital plans year to year. Um, this is a. Um, this is a tool for the town to be able to go in and, and sort of take credit for the things that they're trying to do and the roads that they want to address. Um, but it also houses all of that same information with the estimated cost of improvements on every single road segment on the entire road itself. Um, allowing them to sort of drill into different things. Um, so from there, kind of just went through this, but. Next steps, really, we've already been doing this now with the town for the last year, which is defining the needs. Which is why I'm here giving the presentation because one of the needs is obviously more funding if, if possible. Um, year to year and at least trying to start to build that budget up. But then also just looking at this as a, how do we start to develop this into a multi-year plan? Um, once we start to see an increase in funding and, and budget for the roads. So that's something that I'm continuously going to be working on with the town. Um, until we're ready to do another scan. We typically recommend scanning the roads every three to five years. Volantown being a rural community, five years is more than enough. Um, so you know, by twenty twenty seven, we would expect to start to sort of. Look at doing another re-scan to sort of see, are we losing gaining ground? Because. Again, every year, depending on the winters that we have with the season change that we get in New England. The data does start to become old after a certain point and that five year mark is that point. So we like to recommend doing a scan at least every five years. Just so that we can make sure that we're capturing deterioration accurately and so that we're refreshing the data set. But every year in between, I'm working with Tracy and the DPW staff to one, help with planning needs when, when asked. But also track the work that they are doing so that they're getting credit for it. So they can show the public and have that transparency to say, here's what we have done, here's what we're trying to do. Um, you know, thi- this isn't just money that's going into a vacuum and you have no idea where it's going. It's trying to create that transparency and that level of trust with the community. So that way you're seeing the level of effort being put in and, and the rewards to that effort. Um, again, I'm not saying that this is, you know, something that is going to be an easy decision. Obviously, nobody wants to see taxes go up. I get that. I myself, I live in Westerly. I, we just came out of a bond and. They're already talking about how did we increase the budget to maintain the type of level of, of paving we were used to seeing year to year. So that's a discussion that we have to have as a community. Um, but it's consultants like myself that try to come in and just try to create that level of transparency and trust with you. Um, and knowing that, you know, Tracy has made the investment. Um, and I will say. We are probably one of the more inexpensive ways to go about doing this compared to a lot of our competitors. So it wasn't like she just took a giant chunk of budget. Um, I think people would be shocked to know what it costs for us to just come in and do this full level um, analysis for the town. Um, but that being said, it's, this is data now. This is something you have. This is a. Starting point. This is the foundation moving forward. We don't wanna see this data just kind of be overlooked and thrown aside. Because that's where you are kind of wasting that investment at that point. If you're not going to actually look at this data and try to use it to improve what you do have. Um, so with that, I will uh. Quickly just kind of end with what we are doing every year is running a cost and benefit analysis. So every single roadway does get a separate score other than the overall condition score. It gets another score applied to it. That is what the cost benefit, benefit value is. Um, this is make, looking at a roadways, roadway classification, local dead end arterial collector. Um, the life of improvement uh, for the type of treatment that banned that we're seeing it in. Whether or not there's utilities underneath that roadway, that all goes in and factors into how that score is given. And that's what allows us to start to prioritize roadways on the list. It isn't, it isn't so that Tracy and DPW is just going, well, we like this road, so we wanna work on this road first. We're actually using the data and again, doing an analysis that says, here's what's best. Here's the best way to spend the money that is available and in a way that's going to benefit the town. So that, that is the decisions being made. Obviously, there's, there's gonna be needs that pop up with other types of assets. I know drainage is a huge issue. It is for a lot of communities, especially with the rain we're getting. But in talking with Tracy and the DPW staff, drainage is a giant issue. They're trying to upgrade a lot of the drainage. It's old, old country drainage. And that's an issue on and of itself. It is very expensive.
We don't have it in the budget.
Right. So that's something that we're trying to, you know, balance with the, with the town too. We're not just coming in and. Only focusing on just the paving of the roads. We wanna know where are they looking to prioritize drainage treatments? Does that help? Are, is, you know, addressing the drainage and the road at the same time the right call? Or do we let the town work on the drainage aspects first? Therefore bumping a road down further in the list until the drainage is complete, so that we're not going into a road. Addressing the road, trying to fix a road, and then a year later having DPW come in and tear it up because they gotta fix the drainage. That's a waste of everyone's money and time. So these are the things that we're trying to balance year to year. So that's why we regularly meet and we have these support contracts that we have in between inspection years with the town. Um, and again, it's, it's really just trying to create that level of transparency. Um, so at this point, this is sort of uh. This really isn't applicable. It's the, the Management of Roads platform. This is something that we've gone through with, with Tracy and the staff already. But with that, um, I'll open it up for questions or comments. Uh, and I appreciate your time and, and again, appreciate the, the town of Volantown allowing me to come in and, and work with you on this type of uh, project.
This program has been a huge asset for us at, with Public Works. Um, we've learned a lot of. Um, different road treatments for different stages of the roads and um, what fits our price point. Um, it's been very helpful and. Um, we've all learned a lot, been learning a lot from it, so.
For the program, how much did we spend? I think it was seventeen thousand, sixteen thousand?
It's not a lot.
Yeah, sixteen thousand.
Scheme of everything, it's not a lot for the value and the long term.
And again, like I said, that, that covers you essentially, that really covers you for the entire scan and analysis and then a one, and one year of support. Um, we've now just entered into the first support contract, which is just the maintenance of this until the town is ready to do another scan. Um, so again, it's very short money for what you're getting. Um, we pride ourselves on that. That's not. You know, I'm not in this game for software. That's not what I'm, I'm here to do. I have a background in GIS and the GIS technologies, but. The way we even go about deploying our platform is a very cost effective way. Think the town only pays about a hundred and eighty dollars a year just to have access to that online platform. Um, that's something that we again are trying to keep the cost down so that we can work with any size community. Uh, our biggest thing is going in and trying to be as hands-on as we can. I'm a planner and GIS person by trade, so that's what I'm focused on. Not here to make a buck off of software, so.
Does anyone have any question?
Your analysis going to. The type of traffic.
Yes, that's a great question and thank you for bringing it up. So one thing that we do as well as part of the cost benefit value is looking at. The, the traffic AD, that AADT is what they call that um, on a day-to-day basis. What we do right now is using the federal highway standard um, for each one of the road classifications. So. Local cul- uh, dead end, lo- uh, cul-de-sac roads, local roads. Uh, minor arterials, principal arterials, uh, minor collectors and major collectors. Those all have a rough AADT applied to them, so we've incorporated that in. One thing that we are working towards as a firm is working with some of our. Technology vendors that we, that we partner with. And they are starting to develop a way to access more of a live year-to-year snapshot of traffic counts. Um, the only way before would be to go out and put a digital logger or. I've done it myself when I first started at Beta, sitting at an intersection and trying to get an average for what the day-to-day traffic is on a road and sitting there pressing a button. It's antiquated, it's old, it's slow, it's costly. Um, so what we're working with on, on the tech side of things with our partners is. How can we get that type of data captured? And there's ways to do it and a lot of them are starting to access it with. Um, being able to buy large data sets like in a, in a large quantity. And being able to apply that into the GIS so that we can actually year to year get a better idea of what type of traffic Volantown is getting. Um, not just assuming a number like we're currently doing based on the federal highway standard.
Yeah, the reason why we're.
Yep.
We don't have a large physical pace.
Right.
So. Truck traffic, most, um, most of the downloads would be issues.
Mm-hmm.
But brown, what, on.
Yep.
Traffic.
Mm-hmm, yes.
We share that. Regional.
Yes, yep.
Are there. Grants or any way. To get, to get money earmarked or those access roads to a regional transfer system? Or not raising a tip.
That's a good question.
Right.
That's what we've, we've been looking into grant.
I was just gonna say.
We have been looking in the grant options because one of our two most expensive roads right now are Kenny Road and Hodge Pond Road. They're total, they're, I think there might be like a total failure roads, like they have to be totally reclaimed. So those roads are. Over a million dollars apiece. There's no one on them. So we've been trying to, um, we've been talking about. Trying to get, I forgot what the name of it was again.
The uh, uh.
It's based on a traffic count.
Yes.
Traffic count.
It's the uh.
Loat sit.
Loat sit.
Loat sit.
Turn that brown on, I don't know. They're supporting the household traffic from Sterling. But both ride on for.
Trucks. We take that in consideration. Yeah.
Wait.
Yep.
So is there, for those two roads, is there any chance of a. Of either state support or a region?
That's a good question. I'll have to look.
A regional support with Sterling, obviously saying that we aren't.
Mm-hmm.
Help us with those two roads because we're supporting the truck traffic.
Right.
Their residents.
Right. That's a good point.
No, and that's fair. So for, from our standpoint. Knowing and having spoke with Tracy and the DPW staff, we were made aware of obviously the fact that. These are more of a shared road. Um, so therefore that's going to wait differently um, than, you know, another local road in town, just given the fact that. You have a transfer station off of them, um, and it's a major cut through. So it's, it's things like that. Again, like the state. State's data, the state is looking at this as, here's what the classification is just based on the, the typical road traffic you would expect to see. The state doesn't pay attention to the fact that, oh, there's a transfer station on this. It's going to share a much heavier load. Um, like Tracy alluded to, when we were talking about Kenny and, and Hodge Pond, the reason those got brought up were. Those are the detour roads whenever there's an accident on forty nine. So you're now taking a state road and putting more traffic on two roads that are in poor shape. Quite frankly, and have a lot of drainage issues. And you're forcing traffic onto roads that otherwise most likely wouldn't even really be used as cut-throughs. Um, especially with trucking being a major thing. Uh, I know you have the logging trucks coming in and out of here too. Right. So that being said, that's where Tracy and myself were looking at how to. Potentially get funding from the state in their load sit program. But the issue there is you have to have a road classification of a collector or higher. Volantown only has so many, being rural by nature. And those are your roads in more of the good shape anyway. So it's not like we would be chasing money for roads that are already.
We've been looking at every angle.
Yes.
So. But that's a new one. I like that one. I'll have to look into it.
And that's, and that's something where, you know, I, again, working with the folks that I have of my resource, for my own resources. Um, there's a lot of grant companies that I work with. And I've, Capital Strategic Solutions is the one that comes to mind. They're, they're all former DPW town administrators, town managers that have started this firm that are grant chasers. So they know what, they know what the states are looking for. They know what even the federal government's looking for on funding. Um, another avenue is just because a grant might be for drainage. Doesn't mean it can't also help get a road paved. Because if, if there's, i- if you're able to chase drainage grants, which I think a lot of the issues that we have. If you're able to find and locate those and chase them. You in turn, just by default, might be getting yourself a paved road because you're gonna have to pave it after you make all those upgrades. So there's, there's ways for us to try to go about doing this. Um, but uh, like I said earlier. It's not always like, you know, a dead set thing because even the load sit money is very competitive. So even if, even if Tracy was successful in getting Kenny and Hodge Pond to be converted to a collector road just because of the fact that they. Have seen way more traffic than they normally have because of being used as detour roads. It doesn't necessarily mean that the, then the state funds it just because it's a collector road. Now you have to compete for it against every other town in the state. And, 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 and I'm not saying it's not possible. It's just, you know, it's. I think a lot of people get caught up in the idea that we'll just go get grant money. Um, and it, and unfortunately, that dries up and it dries up quick. Um, and, and if you don't have a grant writer in town on staff, that also poses a challenge, but. That's where, you know, again, our firm would point you in the direction of the folks that can help you with that. Um, and, and it's their jobs to do that.
Have one now.
And you do have one now. So that is a good thing for Volantown, but there's quite a few towns I work with where. They don't have a grant writer on staff and they, they are almost discouraged from wanting to chase it because again, the bodies are limited. Resources are limited, so it's the amount of time having to put in a really good grant application. It, it does take up time and resources too. But it is something that we're looking into. So the only thing that we're, that I'm aware of right now is, and this is something that's been going on in. Almost every town in New England is the MS four permit and that's the MS four permit. Volantown, I don't think has an MS four area within it, so they don't have to.
We don't have to yet, but they keep, we are preparing to have to someday, so.
Rigs are changing all the time. Um, that has to do with sort of water quality and.
Water runoff.
And wa- water runoff. Um, so there are, there's, there's permitting guidelines once you enter into that permit. That if a road is being disturbed pa- past a certain amount of square yardage or square footage. Then all sorts of permits have to be put into place too. So that, that's also part of this, this struggle is the permitting side of things too.
It's more like environmental controls for the water runoff and it's, and it's based on your.
Tree of water before it goes into a final destination.
It's based, the towns that have to, that are mandated to do it right now, it's based on the amount of the town that's. I think paved.
Yes.
So it's mostly the cities and the smaller cities that have to follow it right now because they have more pavement, which is making the more water runoff.
Yeah.
Pollution wise, so.
Not to say that it won't um, into Volantown eventually. Sure. Yeah, I'm, to be honest with you, I'm not familiar with anything that is like, like mandating that and what. Yep. Right. Yes.
Yeah, we've had that. It's been a nightmare.
And again, that's, that's where, you know, DPW made me very aware when I first came into town that drainage. Has to be a top priority right now because of the fact that it's outdated. A lot of it's outdated and undersized. Um.
I haven't heard anything. Yeah, we've been, for Public Works, we've been doing a lot of um, training, the T two center at Yukon. Um, they do a lot of tra- training for Public Works that we attend a lot of the classes when new stuff's coming up. And it's all about like, um, best practices for pavement, for paving and best practices for drainage where we learn all the. Anything that's changed and it's been a really good program for, I go to them and Public Works goes to them and it's been really great, so. I haven't heard anything about that yet.
But they're aware that, you know, the drainage is probably undersized for the amount of water we're seeing nowadays. Um, and that's, you know, directly reflected.
Especially in your area.
So you know, that, that's where, that's why I'm saying like, when we're looking at that three hundred and twenty five thousand as that break even number. The, again, that's just to do the paving. That's not even to include with the cost of drainage and things. So it just, it's just again, it, it. It sounds discouraging. There's ways forward. I know, I, I feel bad because I know the DP. Tracy and DPW are very concerned. They're not, this isn't something that they're taking lightly. Um, which is why they've asked us to come in and.
But we don't like raising money. So we're like, it's just hard because the, it's costly, but it's, it's hard to. Address, so.
So we're trying to look at any avenue to, to find money. Um, to, to address it where we can. Uh, but that's to say. You know, a rural community like Volantown. Might have to take a different approach than what you would, I guess you could say classically look at as like a normal city would.
Cause we currently don't have, we don't have this in the budget right now. The money that we use for road maintenance is through our town. Through our town aid roads money that we get, which is about a hundred and seventy six, seventy two. And um, our capital projects that we do every year. So that's it. So. We get a lot done with a little amount. And I'm, and I'm proud of the way that we've been doing it, but we need to do more, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Dec- uh, December. So we did the scan, I, I should have prefaced this. We did the scan in October, but it takes about. Three to four weeks just to get the data processed back to us. Then we take another about week or two to, to then actually um QA QC it. So by the time the town got their final deliverable, what, we gave them the draft. We went through the draft, made any, any changes, any further changes, finalized it. So by the time I ran that scenario, that forecast model. It was about two months after for their final deliverable, um, which is typical, typical for, for pavement project. So we carry a, we, we use about a four percent um inflation rate in that model. So that's, that is incorporated into it and that's kind of why they all have a little bit of a slight curve to them. Um, but we are trying to address the fact now, again, inflation last year alone was more than four percent, so. We're trying to be realistic. We, we wouldn't expect to see it be as high as it was last year. Um, but the other, the other variable for us, and that's why we're, the square yard cost that we're carrying. It is a conservative number. When I say conservative, I mean, we're probably a little bit higher than it, what it really should be. That's to build in for any sort of contingencies as well. Um, with the cost of paving going up. It varies year to year. Unfortunately, we've only been seeing it go up ever since COVID. Um, and like I said, we're not really sure why in the industry, but the liquid asphalt is. Price is going up every year, but we're not really seeing any changes being made to why it's going up. It's just going up. So. Well, they're saying it's shipping and things like that for materials, but, you know, yet to be seen. Yep. For, you're saying for Volantown? Oh, oh, okay, yeah, so. Typical, for the average for New England, we, I would say. The last year and a half, we saw probably anywhere from between like seven to ten percent. On just the asphalt, like just the paving costs in general. Um, unfortunately, I have a town that just gave me their paving cost for this year. And they went from about ninety eight dollars a ton for hot mix. They are now going to be paying one hundred and thirty seven dollars a ton for hot mix. Um, so their, theirs is a very drastic increase. Um, it's a, it. Yep, and it's, it is in Connecticut, but it's nowhere near this side of Connecticut. So. There's the, the, I, this region I'm seeing right now across the board about a hundred, hundred and two for, for cost. That's, that's diff- that difference is last year, the same time. We were around ninety, anywhere between ninety two to ninety five dollars a ton. So it did go up. Didn't go up as much as I thought it was going to. Um, Rhode Island right now, I'm seeing about a hundred and ten. Being the average. I was hoping it wasn't gonna do that in Connecticut. So far it hasn't, except for my one anomaly out in Western Connecticut, but. That's a, that's a different issue, so. Um, but you know, one thing, one thing we do see is that, you know. About five years ago, I had towns usually paying anywhere from seventy eight to eighty five dollars a ton for hot mix delivered. Um, in, and, you know, put in place. Now, the last, like I said, last year, we were like ninety two to ninety five. Um, this year, we're around that hundred mark. I'm being told that that should be kind of the top right now for a while. It's not supposed to go up any further. Um, we'll see. But that's what I was told. This is the first year I was actually told that. The last few years, it's just been that, it's gonna go up, okay? So we try to account for it, but that's why, that's why the maintenance of the program is so crucial. That's why we stay in contact with the town as much as we do, because anytime they go out to bid a job, we're trying to. Um, make sure that we're accurately representing the costs that they're seeing for their region. Um, luckily, I have a very large network of the paving vendors that do a lot of the work in New England. We meet with them. Yearly to kind of see what their costs are gonna do, not just on hot mix paving, but on any of their treatments. Whether it's chip sealing, you know, micro surfacing, thin bonded wearing courses, Nova chips. Those types of treatments also have some component of liquid asphalt in them. So we do sit with them regularly and try to stay on board as much as possible to know. What we can expect to see for costs. So when we're going into planning season with towns, we already kind of have a little bit of a heads up, so we can project that a little bit better. Yep.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. I know that was a little bit longer than.
No, that's fine. It's good we didn't have the meeting after. Thank you.